Add to the September 15, 2020 work session. I'd call the work session to order. Official time is 4:31. You get approval of the agenda for work session.
Sub move to chairman.
Second.
My favorite. Uh, uh, it's happened. Thank you all. Mr. Ritter, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So today we have sort of two different, but related things that we're here to talk about. The, and this all relates back to the SPOST and the money that was allocated there for, for some large scale water projects. One of the things that we've talked about kind of between then and now, and maybe even back around that time, was how we finance some of these large projects. One of the things that we've learned about sort of through that is a public facilities authority and wanted to have an opportunity to share with, with the board what that is and why it might make sense for us. Andrew Tritt with Steeple is here to talk us through that. And then sort of the second thing that we want to get to is actually looking at the, the projects. And we certainly did some of that during the, during the SPOST process, but want to try to nail down exactly what, what the board wants to do with, with the funds that are available. So, so first up, we've got Andrew and I just ask him to kind of come and talk to you a little bit about the public facilities authority concept and why it might make sense here.
Welcome.
Hey, nice to be with you guys.
Hey, good to have you.
Sure, well, you know, just to kind of continue what Jason was sort of referencing. Public facilities authorities are, you know, one of the ways that we finance a whole host of projects for cities and counties. And what it does is it allows you to have an intergovernmental contract between, you know, municipality or county in this particular region. And what it does is it allows the county or city or whatever municipality it is to effectively pledge property tax, which helps lower debt service payments. It allows us to go and get a lower interest rate. So as it relates to the county's water sewer projects, how that would work with the county and what it's looking at is it does two things. It, it allows you to preserve your water sewer rates because when we use a public facilities authority, it allows money to pay back the debt through a number of different sources, whether, you know, it's money from the general fund, whether it's money from SPOST, whether it's water sewer revenues. And so from a financing perspective, we don't have any sort of rate cover. So when we think about things like GFO, you've got to have a rate covenant of at least a 110. So that means what your debt service is and another 10% of whatever that is, that's how you have to set your rates. In the public bond market, that's usually, you know, 115%, which, and it just kind of subtle gets from there. Just having the bare minimum, you know, a lot of places try to have like a 140 coverage or higher just from a credit quality. When we use a public facility, our public facilities authority, we can set all that aside. All you have to do is have 100% of your debt payments from water sewer revenues, from SPOST or other sources. So that's one of the reasons why we've looked at it from this perspective, all looking at the water sewer projects and how can we do it the cheapest way possible. It doesn't have to be utilized only for water sewer projects. You know, you guys did a jail financing a couple of years ago through ACCG. Having this public facilities authority would allow us to refinance that debt more cheaply and, you know, to create higher savings, just because if you think about the jail, it's a lease, it's like kind of a weird piece of real estate. And by having that intergovernmental agreement between the county and this public facilities authority takes the real estate out of the equation and just provides a better rate. So I wouldn't view it just in the lens of this is only water sewer related. I mean, you can use it as a tool and resource for a lot of different things, but that's really the genesis of how we came to talk about that today. And obviously there's a process for this. Jason, I don't know if you've been going through. No process? Okay. So when you create a public facilities authority, it's really created, you know, the first step is you guys saying, we'd like to have this. The second step is for you to go, you know, and it kind of runs concurrently, that you talk to your legislative delegation because somebody's got to introduce this as a bill in the Georgia House or the Georgia Senate. And that's where it gets approved. There's never really any controversy with these in the Assembly here in the Senate. If, if a level of delegation says, we want this, you know, who is in it? Anybody representing like Raven County or Grady County that really care about Jones County, right? So, I mean, it's usually overseen account. But what the delegation typically does, and this isn't specific to you guys, just sort of as a rule of thumb, they want to note from here for you guys that yes, this is something we want. You provided them some direction and then sometime in January, they'll drop it as a House bill and it'll get approved at some point. And then either the governor, once it's approved by the bodies, it either becomes active July 1st of that year or unless the governor signs the bill and acts it soon. So, you know, obviously if we, you know, were to get this route, we're sort of proactively saying this is something we want to do, this is how we're going to finance it. We can't really utilize it until January, between sometime between January 1st next year and July 1st next year. So we're doing a little bit of groundwork on the front end. But this is the cheapest way that's been identified in conversation so far, get the lowest rate. So that's why we're talking to you about it. Now, if for some reason this wasn't something to all money to do, then we go back with maybe it must be a little bit expensive, which is fine too. So that's in a, in a very high picture. I'd be more than happy to answer questions or get into as many details as, as you'd really like me to do.
And I guess how many of those do we have in middle Georgia or throughout the state when it comes to this public facility authorities?
If I had to guess, probably 20 or so.
Okay.
I mean, it's not something that's terribly uncommon. I think that more and more, you know, counties use these.
Yeah.
I did two transactions, I guess, last year that both of those public facilities authorities were created in the seventies. So, I mean, when you go out over time, this is something that will exist, you know, for you guys for a really long time, as long as you keep it active and do those things. And you just have to pay your DCA dues for it and that's about it. But on, you know, we've got some examples of, I mean, ones that were created recently that the county manager has, that have been created in the last couple of years. And that's, don't own it to it, but that's usually about how many the city and county has to agree upon? Just on the county? Okay. It, you know, it's, it's, it would just be a county tool. You know, the, the cities could create a city, you know, public facilities authority if they wanted as well. But I think it'd be one that it took.
Commissioner Pitts, it's not, it's not an authority as, as you typically think of one that's going to own property and, and be able to do things on its own. It, it, it really just exists as a financing mechanism as I understand it.
It's a one-time tool. So like say in this instance where the county utilizes it for water sewer projects. You need that to be available and to have, you know, a board, you know, sitting on it when we use it. No assets were transferred to it. There's no operating, you know, kind of through them, this is your debt, this is your system. Everything about it is yours. They just kind of happen to show up once they had a meeting and that's it. Really, I mean, we see a lot of these. They're typically not very active. And, you know, I mentioned a couple of them last year. You know, we, we asked them to meet a second time just so that they could approve for minutes because we knew it would probably be a few years before they ever met again. So that's just kind of how it goes from an operational perspective here, not handing anybody. It doesn't require you to go through them again for another water sewer project. It just happens that this one, you know, has proposed or potentially.
Thank you.
What expense, is there any expense to the county? I mean, just so we do.
No. No, I mean, I would defer to Jason whether the county attorney would charge anything. Typically, you know, if there were any sort of expenses, you know, the bond financing would pick it up. But I don't know that there's anything, any expense that would be in this creation other than maybe some out of bond.
Yeah, yeah, I think that would be.
And the only question I'd ask you is talk about having approved the minutes because I hadn't used it in a while. I mean, it's not going to be something that we're planning for and not using.
Oh, like an ongoing basis? You know, if you were to keep it active, I mean, I think there's a DCA registration fee. You know, the authority would have its own seal, you know, that's maybe a one-time out-of-pocket expense, but you know, it's, it's not something that would be, I mean, this, you know, that's something that is just not a big, not a factor.
Jason, I would, would, in the event that, that we do come to some kind of agreement with the city in the future and want to work together on some things, what, how cumbersome would it be to amend it or change it or add the city? Or would it be that they have to create their own and we have our own and we're just having our governmental agreements or how would that work?
You know, that's, so that's kind of a legal question, but it would have to go before, if you were to amend it, it would have to go before the legislature again.
Okay.
So then you're really asking yourself, do I want to amend something, which is, or do I just want to create something new that includes both the city and the county? Because you're having to go through the same process no matter what. So then it really probably becomes, you know.
So if we had a five-board representation and it was just with the county and, and we worked something with the city where we wanted a joint, we would still need to have just for instance, a seven-man board so they would have representation of, then you're going to have to go back and recreate the wheel anyway, right?
Yeah, that's right. And so, I mean, you know, you could have any number of people on the board that you really want. And so that's something that Jason and your delegation would work out with the AG's office about, you know, how many, I mean, there's, there's probably about a 12-page length of creation of public facilities authority where you outline how many members you have, you know, three, five, seven. You know, when are their first terms and how are they reappointed, that kind of thing, that Jason would kind of work out behind the scenes. So yeah, I mean, that'd be a consideration in the future. So if you were trying to merge one with the city, then, you know, you're either amending it or you're just starting fresh with a new authority. It's really, you know, whenever that might work or probably the path of least resistance, I guess.
Just speak a little bit about the, I know with, and TM may know more, but with the, or speak better to it, but I know with our, if we're financing with water rates and different ways of funding, we've got to have water rate structures at a certain level. You've got to have, so he spoke a little bit about it. So that, all that, with a, with a PFA, we're basically financing our own debt with three different avenues to pay for it. And that is the revenue stream, the SPOST dollars and the water department.
Yeah, I would say, and correct me if I get off track here, but I, I think you, you still got to come up with enough money some kind of way through SPOST and other means to, to service the debt. But you're not required to set your rates at a certain level in order to accomplish that. So, you know, GFO or USDA or an entity like that, they're going to say you've got to set them at, at whatever rate. And I think, I think what you were saying is this takes all that off the table.
Yeah, I think that's a huge benefit.
Yeah, yeah. You still got to come up with the money, but you're not forced to come up with it that way. So.
That's right.
The public facilities authority is basically a line item in budget, whereas USDA debt, they require a certain amount of coverage and it has to be water revenue only, cannot be anything else. GFO will allow SPOST, but you have to tell them upfront, well, that won't take it. This, the decision's up to the county.
It, it just seems to me like we've got different buckets of money and different avenues of getting our, our debt serviced that are just separated right now. And a PFA allows you to kind of put it in general funds so that you can still service it and use incoming from different areas instead of.
Yeah, yeah. I think that's, I think that's why this makes a lot of sense in this situation.
Yeah, in our situation, we're, I think it makes a lot of sense. I was reading up on it and it looks like it, it allows us to do things that we're kind of restricted to do. I mean, we can still do them, it just costs more to do them three different ways instead of joining it together.
Yeah.
And if there's no recurring cost to us or upfront cost to us or obligation since it's our, our authority and our board and we set it up from the beginning of our.
Yeah, yeah.
Not a bad idea.
What, the way the water and sewer is now is a separate entity from the general fund. So how, how would that work?
It would stay right where it is. And so this authority doesn't take ownership of any of the assets or anything like that. All that stays just like it is right now.
Well, if, if the money from, from them is put in the general fund, how can we use it on water and sewer if water and sewer is a separate?
How does it flow that way?
There wouldn't, so from an accounting perspective, you still have your water sewer fund.
Right.
And that continues. You know, so from an accounting perspective, you know, I, I think that you, you've just got a payment from, say, the water fund and a payment from the general fund. So not necessarily like the money's going from one fund and then to the other fund and then how, I mean, you know, I don't know how your journal entries would be specifically. But one of the reasons why you keep your water fund, besides from an accounting perspective, is that you might in the future, you know, I mean, this is the, you know, long-term debt, right? So it, it, you're likely to borrow more money again for water sources at some point before this is paid off. And then like, so you've got a GFO in the future, and that water fund is still there for GFO to be able to do their thing or have, you know, however it's done. But I mean, if he preserved this, you still have a water fund, water sewer fund that has its own account, its own cash balances and investments and those kinds of things.
If, if, if the money from, I'm, I'm probably just not getting it, but if the money from, from them is put in the general fund, then, then it become, doesn't the water and sewer become a burden to all the taxpayers instead of just along on the water and sewer?
Is it, I see what you're saying. Is the, so is the, I guess is the, the debt ultimately backed by the full faith and credit of?
No, but yes. So the debt's backed by the full faith and credit of county. That doesn't mean that that's how it's going to pay, but that is how it's backed. So just because you've got that intergovernmental contract that pledges the full faith from the county, you know, doesn't require you to do that unless you just don't make payments, right? So the, the only time that that would come into effect, which you're right, I mean, if you kind of dug, you know, dug your heels in the sand and said, I wasn't going to pay a dime, right? And a bondholder were to come back and say, you know, which would be their right to do, which would be to compel you to estimate payments, they're not compelling you to raise your water sewer rates. They're compelling you to levy a property tax. That's their security system, right? Which is, you know, I mean, the same thing, if you had debt that was like through GFO or USDA or public bond, you know, you're only pledging revenues of the system. So they could only compel you to raise water sewer rates. They couldn't compel you to, you know, from a property tax perspective. So, you know, that, that said, I mean, the nuance is that you're, you're enabling water sewer rates to not have to achieve the, the higher threshold than a water sewer revenue law now. But I mean, I think to your point, yeah, there's, there's an ad lora pledge or security behind it that, that exists, which is one of the reasons why it produces a lower interest rate. It's more, it's a more sure.
Well, just to be clear, and I'm not, don't get me wrong, I'm not saying there's anything wrong with it, it's very interesting to me, but just to be clear, there, there is a possibility that the taxpayers of the whole county would have to, they'll pay for the water and sewer that they don't have.
Yeah, you know, I mean, it depends on how you want to operate it, but, but yes, you know, I mean, you're, you're pledging property taxes, right? So if you were to just shut down the system and not produce any water, whatever reason, and you didn't want to, you know, find it in any other source, yes, that is, that is the security. So I mean, the alternative is, you know, just how do you, how do you want to manage your water sewer rates?
If, if, let's say we decided to do the public facilities authority, would it be John County public? Now, is that a one-time for the county or could the city do their own? Okay. So much for that, that age. I'd say you're smiling, you see where I'm going with that? It didn't hurt to ask.
No, you have to ask, you have to ask.
If it was a one-time bill, it's okay.
Right, you have to ask.
Okay. You know, we're fine with however, how, I mean, we're not here to say you should do this or you should do that. You know, the, the genesis of this is finding the lowest interest rate in a way that allows different revenue sources to repay this, this debt more frequently. And as I mentioned, it does give some benefit to, if y'all wanted to consider it, it needs some jail and kind of, I guess that's safer, a bit stronger, but you know, like I said, we're just here to sort of, you know, maybe get the tax bond there. If you guys ask us to call.
What's, what interest rates do you see it now, Andrew?
I mean, it, it's changing by the day. I would tell you though, that, I mean, we're at the lowest level today. You know, I bet we're seeing it. It's crazy, like what kind of interest rates where they are. I mean, you whatever thought a 10-year US treasury, that would be, you know, 67 basis points, you know, which is kind of shocked. You know, as, as you sort of contemplate this, you know, obviously where it's headed, I mean, that's a $64 question and I think it's really kind of COVID-19. Quicker that we get back to day-to-day life and we don't find ourselves in a recession, which is the big deal. I mean, we don't know what kind of weight we're leaving behind, but I mean, the federal government has certainly provided unprecedented, you know, stimulus. So it's impossible to say where exactly the rates we're going to go, but you know, there's, there's not much, you know, further forward to get down. Herefore, we've been kind of hovering in the same level in the last year or two.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a quick question.
Sure, go ahead, Dale.
Other than the three pages in the Excel spreadsheet, was there any other handout?
Go ahead, she.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure. So the bond in total that would be floated would be, is that 1.417, 750 now? Is that just sewer? Oh, wait a minute, I was thinking 32 now, which I'm looking at.
So what was this object project?
Commissioner, we hadn't gotten to that part of the shit. We were, we were just kind of talking about the, the public facilities authority concept of this.
Right, there we go. As I heard, Commissioner Robinson mentioned, you know, constituents paying for it that are not on it. So I was just curious what the actual number was. This is, we're not at the number, but I'm just going to say this, I think it's their time that the entire.
County invest in the expansion of the infrastructure other than the one or two districts that are primarily on it, but pay for the expansion into the rest of the county. So if that's where we're officially going, that finally logically makes sense to me as opposed to the burden being on just the 4,000-plus customers.
Part of me wants to think that whether it's, you know, since the county's basically the owner of everything, whether it's the jail, whether it's the industrial park, whether it's the water projects, whether it's sewer projects, whether any of that, it's county. And if, if there's a way to combine parts of it to an authority to, to be able to pay for all of it, I, I get what Commissioner Robinson is saying, you know, there's, there's a chance that people don't, that are not using the, the service might have to pay for it. But I think at the end of the day, if our water department, God forbid, goes belly up, the, the Board of Commissioners would have to figure out how to pay for that. And it, and at the end of the day, there's an opportunity or, or an option to go up on taxes to, to make that payment either way. I'm, I would hope that that's a last-case scenario for any of it, but I ju, I just think it's a way that, I mean, it's all our stuff. We've just got it spread out in so many different areas. I think it's an easier way to, and, and a more efficient and a, and a cost-efficient way to, to be able to, to finance it. I mean, we, we voted on, and the, the taxpayers voted on SPOST to do high-dollar projects, infrastructure projects, water and sewer and, and even on the jail and even on the industrial park. It was the, the voters voted on that to do it. Now, I think if we got an opportunity to make it happen and save money doing it, I, I was looking for, for a reason not to when we, when we come into this and, and I hadn't seen anything that really, there's a whole lot, not a whole lot of cons to, to throw at it that I see.
But also you got to realize that if we expand to water and possible sewer, it's a win for everybody because we have opportunity to attract.
Well, then we're going to get retail and some economic development.
Those same people that invested into it are also going to get the option to reap the benefits through the economic developments. I mean, you can look at it several different ways, you know, I'm going to be paying for it, but I'm also going to be getting the savings if we.
It's just an investment, I think, and as people understand, you hopefully get a good positive return on your investment. I like the idea that this is just one tool that we can use to keep our rates low so that we can have more money to invest in, infrastructure projects. So, I mean, I think it's a win-win for us to go down this road and I'm sure it leases.
Any other question? There's a work session, anybody? Any, any questions? None? Thank you.
Thank you, Duke.
Yeah, absolutely. I'll be down for a few minutes if y'all.
Sure.
Okay.
Let's take them here.
Yes. Please, there's, um, Justin Care, we're not- This is a very simple project list. The line item on the top, Henderson Road well, which we finally got EPD approval last week. I think y'all have voted for that to come out of deconstruction and it's ready to go finally. But we, we threw some priorities in and threw some suggested funding in. Priority three, fixing the water meter change out. Priority four, generators for haddock. And then priority six, the railway bypass connection. We propose to pay for those out of water department construction, which is funds we already have. Haven't been able to get an updated number on that, but it's somewhere between 1.2 and 1.5.
I don't know any, any better than that.
So, those, those three, we, we look for y'all to, ask for y'all to consider those. And the remaining projects can be broken up however you want to do them, whichever one you want to do. We've got Henderson Road Water Treatment Plant, the second well at Massiville, rebuilding Riverville, uh, Water Treatment Plant, Graham Road area expansion and Highway forty nine expansion. Those, those five projects total at about fifteen one one million. One other project that has become very near and dear to me is, uh, number seven, the light and tight elevated storage tank. That's a project that can go in several different locations, but good for us, good for the water department, but usage with city of grade this summer's been unprecedented. We've, we've never seen. We built a two billion gallon ground storage tank five or six years ago. It's set seventy feet's full, it's set below thirty feet. Hopefully could fill it up, or we just could produce enough water to fill it up. Which others? Go ahead.
It was the most challenging summer, I think, I've had in terms of meeting the, the demand. And I don't think it was weather related, it wasn't equipment related, I think it was just pure demand. And basically, the man was on the light and tight quarter going to the city. That was where the demand was, and so you've got other elements of the system that is trying to compensate and, and supplying water to that, to that area too. So you're taking from the northern sections and combining it and sending it to the city. So, uh, it was challenging. I mean, I, Tim was right, the past three months, I haven't been able to get the forty nine tank above fifty feet, and sixty nine feet is full, and I've got everything running that I can twenty-four hours a day. So it was just unprecedented, uh, demand. In fact, two days ago was down to thirty three, thirty three feet, which was one of the lowest points of the whole summer. And then, I mean, there's, there's times where I can drop eighteen feet overnight, just like that. And two days ago, I gained ten feet overnight. I mean, it's just the wild swings of, of demand like that. And to the point, I would have to call the city and, and just discuss things with them and how we can help me out, because that, that gets too low for my, to be comfortable for me, in terms of then you're going to have pressure differences in the system and that causes a whole range of issues. So we've had a, I've got a good relationship with Sean and, and, and we work together, but I really just believe it's just the man, and I don't, I believe it's more of a well issue on their, their aspect. I, I don't know what kind of shape their wells are in, but this summer has proven to me that was, I think they were pulling a great deal from us, um, more than usual.
Is it showing up? I mean, a lot of usage from the city, is that showing up in the revenue too?
Well, you know, it was, a typical summer was hot and dry and you get your, your times where you get your peak usage, but I don't think there's anything out of the ordinary. I mean, we handled River North fairly well, you know, we never, we haven't ran the Talon Creek substation for four years now. But it was just that the light and tight quarter was just very, the demand was very intense.
Well, my question is-
Does it bill well?
Well, their last three months, it's been running about forty one, forty five thousand a month.
So that, my question is, are we being paid for the water going through that meter or could we be pumping water down a well?
No, it's, we don't have any issues in the system where that water's going, it's just, it's this usage. And I can tell that because, um, their tanks have been in the best shape that I've ever seen them. I mean, you, you've been around for several years, you could know in the summertime, you look at their tanks, and I'm not trying, I'm not trying to knock the city in any way, obviously, that they would be dangerously low in the summertime level. They've been three quarters, seven eighths full, and in fact, um, two weeks ago, we had customers call me saying, hey, we, your, your tank on behind the dairy queen is, it was overflowing. And I called and said, hey, we're getting, you know, people calling in about your tank, yeah, it's overflowing, so, uh, never had that happen, but their tanks are extremely full, so.
Historically, they probably operate twenty-five percent to seventy-five percent. You rarely, you rarely see them over seventy-five percent.
What is our normal bill in the, in the summertime?
It could range, um, up to mid thirties to upper thirties. We're, we're definitely a little bit above, we're, you know, mid forties, uh, right now, last three months.
I guess I was kind of following along with Mr. Robinson's, if our, if our usage is here and our water bills are here, are we, and are we, are we showing the same revenue than showing usage when it comes to supplying?
Oh, yeah, that has increased.
Okay.
It has increased, and-
That's what I was getting, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't having leaks somewhere, we weren't losing water and just showing that we were pumping a hundred gallons and only billing for fifty gallons, and we got a-
No, it's, it's showing up.
Okay.
If you go on with Tim, this is such a great representation of where the county is and to the water department is in terms of needs. Obviously, the supply is where we have to focus. I've been, even when I was a plant operator, you know, I was up here talking about the supply. And, uh, we do a great job moving water from point A to point B, but we've got to get the supply up. And, uh, so that's definitely priority, and Henderson Plant was just such a highlight this summer, the, the need for what we have to do here is just a top priority. But the, to get the supply side, then we can concentrate on absolutely going into the distribution side, adding customers, uh, we've got mitigation efforts with, uh, generators for haddock, and even the, uh, priority number six, the gray highway bypass connection, it's a, it's a good idea. We're, right now, since we, we've taken away the gray highway booster station, uh, we have a one plan, if we ever had an, an emergency where it affected the supply side, like say the light and tight four, or we can stub out and pull in a diesel generator and still be able to supply them with water, but just in a different avenue. And it doesn't take much money to do it, so it's just a mitigation effort there. And, um, of course, at the last, you know, we're, we're talking about the wastewater treatment plant. When I took this position, Tim asked me the very first thing, Jeffrey, where do you, where do you think, where do you see the department going? And I said wastewater treatment plant, I think it's the missing link here. The county has so many wonderful qualities, and, um, and it's going to take the water department to set these, uh, the infrastructure in place to, to be able to do that, that's, that's my big one, you know, I just, I can, I see grow a thing, and it's grow smartly. I think this is a great representation of it.
We've got, we've got one well in the works now that we've already approved, correct?
The Henderson Road well is the one listed on the top.
And what were the other ones you were saying, Tim, that we're going to take out of the water fund? I just, I didn't mark them.
Uh, priority three, the water meter change out.
Yeah.
We recommend the three, four, and then six. You know, and these take time, there may be other items, you can, you can move the money from y'all that you used to pay. Higher, you know, the last couple of years, I don't, I need to do this just for long satisfaction. Y'all funded new booster station on Highway forty nine, we put it down by Chapman Way, and then y'all funded rebuilding Light Tie. If we hadn't had those two stations, we wouldn't made there, so we could have gray off and they'd have been around, because we could, we could have moved enough water. Now, the Light Tie station, we're moving eight hundred gallons a minute. We should have moved a thousand, but I can't produce a thousand and send to them, so I would, I would have been defeating myself, that's what we're going to take.
So we definitely got to have supply, um, or, or we can't distribute it, that's a fact. But I, I just want to make sure that, for, for my, um, benefit, I want to make sure that we're prioritizing supply and, and-
Yes.
-distribution as we move along, instead of sinking all of our money into supply and have plenty of water, and we don't have any return on it because we haven't got any customers, because that's not going to make the public happy that says, I'm ready for water, I need water and I want water. Well, guess what? We got tons of water now, but you still don't have it.
Well, the priority one and two, and priority five, which is the water production side of this, you're looking at roughly four point four million dollars.
And then the next two are distribution.
Distribution is eleven.
What's unique about the Grisville plant, it's the priority number five, it's a, it's a, it's a workhorse, it really is, and we've got some of the best wells in that, in that vicinity. But with Grisville plant, the out service pump, the high service pumps out pump the well, so once the clear well drops to a certain point, it inhibits the high service pump, and then there's a delay, it could be like thirty, thirty-five minutes where the plant is off, and if the wells are filling up the clear well, then it'll do it all over again, and does that day in and day out. So you're losing a lot of time with that plant off, and that's where we have trouble with the Joy Cliff and Gray Highway tank keeping it full in the summer, because the high, the forty nine booster pump is pulling out of it, trying to fill up the forty nine tank, which is thirty feet, so it's just twenty-four hours a day, it's pulling out of there, so I've been down to six feet in that Joy Cliff tank at one time this summer, that's with everything, with Massiville running into those tanks. So, um, so that's, that's the problem with Grisville, it's, it's too much of a downtime, you got to get it to where the high service pumps continually run, just like Henderson plant, that way we wouldn't have so much downtime, was that.
That project will take a little while, because we had mentioned the Grisville plant, it was built before I was born, it's that and all. And it remains hard, what it must do. We need property for the fourth well, so it's going to take a little while to work out all of the, the issues with that plant, you know, whether we do another site or we do something on the site we have now. And we've got to find another well and tie in and get power to it. Massiville, the county owns a piece of property for the well? Henderson Road, uh, we have pretty much everything we're there now, the railroad casings in place, some matter running the line and upgrading pumps and chemical feed and all that. But the Grisville plant will take us a little while. And our goal is to get all three of them to a thousand gallons a minute, which is about one point four million gallons a day.
Do we own enough land on Erica Lane to put in the type tank you're talking about?
I don't think so, but I'll take advantage there. The item seven, the one up at Light Tie, we've worked at about five different locations, and we tried to look at an area there around the landfill, uh, somewhere property that the county owns. The closer I get to Light Tie, the less water line, water line I have to run to.
Erica Lane, probably by the height-
It is.
-elevation around there.
It is. Probably about thirty feet. The, the problem we're running to with the stand pipe, I think stand pipe's seventy-seven or seventy-eight feet tall, it's about fifty-nine hundred gallons a foot. When you drop it ten PSI, that's twenty-three feet, you, you've taken out a hundred and forty thousand gallons, and your pressure's gone from fifty to forty. For the elevated tank, you drop it twenty-three feet, you still got another thirty-two in the hole, so you, you don't see the pressure fluctuations that you see with a stand pipe. And an elevated tank, I have a big gallon elevated tank, the hole depth's about forty-eight feet, so if you drop it ten PSI, you still have about fifty PSI, you have about two hundred and fifty thousand gallons in it. We're just trying to look for something that'll buffer between us and the city, and then serve what goes down Graham Road. And one of the projects we have here is the Cumbler Highway eighteen triangle, that's Cumbler Road, uh, out eighteen, Buck Road, all that area, because there's a, there's a tremendous number of homes out in that area, would help serve that area as well.
Commissioner Martin, have you got any questions?
You know, the, the, my big concern is if we're going to do it, um, is just making sure that the resources are there, and whether that means splashed or looking at an entire county participation, uh, to make this happen, um, just making sure that we do that right. For years, these projects have been on the table from the time when I first came in and long before, um, and the situation hasn't gotten any better. I mean, this is one of those big cans saying that, you know, it goes down the road a good bit, and you live out there with constituents that have been crying for water for a good bit, and forty-nine's been desperate for water. You know, it's time that the county make it a big project, you know, and, and put it, um, you know, on the forefront, um, and then allocate the resources, we got to take a bond out, uh, let's do that, because we have the resources in town to do it, and the longer we wait, the worse the situation gets. Water is not, um, regenerating as quickly as we'd like, and we don't have a lake to just section it from, so we have to do the right things by our constituents now, because it's going to take, you know, anywhere from four to ten years to get all this stuff done.
Well, you know my opinion, I don't, I don't like borrowing money, and I think we're being visibly responsive, responsible, um, for some time and, and, but I agree with Commissioner Martin, I, you know, not many people have got the cash money in the bank to buy their house, they have to finance big ticket items, and I think this is an infrastructure item that is needed throughout the county and, and benefits everybody and will, can only benefit us more by, by bringing, uh, revenue into the county and, and to take the burden off the rooftops, you know, by, by providing water. I don't think there's a better time, um, dealing with bonds and stuff that I'm dealing with, I, I hadn't seen, again, hadn't seen a better time to get to better rates than we are right now, and, um, I don't think, you know, we, we talked about it, we agreed on it, we put it out to the voters, they agreed on it, I'm saying, let's, you know, let's make it happen.
Always said it's good debt and bad debt, this is good debt.
Yes, it is.
Any other comments, questions?
What's our next move, Chairman?
Any questions from the audience?
Need the pen to sign something?
I hadn't heard that vote yet.
I'd motion we give the chairman the pen.
We ain't in open meeting yet. Any questions from the audience? Go ahead, it's for us.
So, Mr. Chairman, in terms of next steps, I think on the Public Facilities Authority side of things, we had on the agenda for tonight a resolution, basically the board saying, yes, this is something we want to do. We talked a little further with the bond attorney and Ashley. And we think before you guys vote on that, it might be good to meet with the local legislative delegation and then, and, yeah. I don't anticipate any issues there, but, you know, just be a good, good next step. And then maybe in October, come back and vote on that resolution. So that's one thing, to get the Public Facilities Authority process started. And then on the project side of things, just want to make sure, in terms, as we start putting all this together, so you guys are good on priority one, which is the Henderson Road water treatment plant upgrades. Number two, which is the Massiville water treatment plant, well 11. The 1.8 million there, which is the Grizzleville water treatment plant. And then Graham Road and Highway 49, for a total of the 15, 093. Just want to make sure everybody's generally in agreement on the projects for us to include as we, as we start putting all this together.
Yes.
Yep, number one, number two.
Number one, number two. Five, and then Graham Road and Highway 49.
Give them a go with that.
And Highway 49.
Hi, Jason. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Is there a reason why we left out number three? And the reason why I'm asking is because we know that we had a lot of water loss through the old and malfunctioning meters. So we could be creating additional supply and then dropping it off somewhere? Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was just going to say, number three, four, and six, as we have it laid out here, they would be able to, we would be able to do those projects. They would just be funded out of the new construction account.
Gotcha, okay, I'm good.
And those could be started immediately, the replacement on the water meter?
All we need is to go ahead.
So just needs to have the agenda or...
It should be administrative. We voted to do the change out.
Yeah, we've already voted to do it.
Kind of been doing it in sections, I think.
Yeah, we don't have to vote again, it's a done deal.
So we can go ahead and do, like I said, the water meter, the generator and haddock, and gray highway bypass connection? Cool? Right, through the new construction account?
Okay, so those, we'll get that rolling.
I'm excited, I'm going to take all of it. Could we get sewer in in six months?
Is this a good debt or...
You know this is a good deal.
If he's okay with it. If he'll sign off on it, I'll sign off on it.
Anything else tonight? We appreciate it. Thank y'all for your hard work. Anything else for this work session? All right, we'll take, we got 30 minutes break, if we have... Uh-oh, we have something else that... Well, look at you.
Oh.
Yeah, come here, hold on a minute, okay.
Mr. Chairman, that's just part of the comprehensive plan and we're...